Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Stratford City Council meeting. We begin this evening's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I'll now turn it over to the clerk.
Through your worship, item two is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of the Corporation of the City of Stratford dated January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two be adopted as printed.
Moved by Councillor Henderson and Councillor Beatty. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
Item four is adoption of the addendum, and prior earlier today, an addendum was circulated to add item seven point three to the agenda. And there is a motion that the addendum to the regular agenda of council and standing committees dated January twenty-fourth to add item seven point three be added to the agenda.
By Councillor Clifford, second by Councillor Seven, the addendum be adopted. All those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Thank you.
Item five is reported, the Committee of the Hole-in-Camera Session, item five point one, at the January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two session under the Municipal Act as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered, and that was item three point one, Development Charges Education and Training Session, and this was held under the exemption of a meeting of a council or local board over committee of either of them may be close to the public, if the following conditions are both satisfied. The first being that the meeting is held for the purpose of educating or training the members, and two, at the meeting, no member discusses or otherwise deals with any matter in a way that materially advances the business or decision-making of the council. And as the purpose of the in-camera session was to provide education and training, no direction was given.
Thank you.
Moving to item five point two, the January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two Committee of the Hole-in-Camera Session was canceled. Moving to item six, Hearings of Deputations and Presentations, there are none scheduled. Moving to item seven, Orders of the Day, item seven point one is a resolution regarding my Main Street Community Activator Grant. And there is a staff recommendation that staff be authorized to apply for the My Main Street Community Activator Grant for the development of a small stage and additional seating on Veterans Drive across from the benchel. That the stage and seating area on Veterans Drive be included in the two thousand and twenty-two budget deliberations. And that's subject to confirmation of receipt of the My Main Street Grant Fund, staff be authorized to issue tenders for the development and construction of the stage and additional seating.
As Ritzma moving, seconded by Councillor Gaffney. Discussion. Councillor Vazalakos and Councillor Seven.
I did have a question around accessibility in that area, like is, are part of the plan to allow for accessibility access to that area, perhaps maybe off of Coburg or the parking area? It just occurs to me that there will need to be some allowances for that.
Director of Community Services, can you answer that, Dave? Thank you.
Yeah, the, through the mayor, the design that we would have to proceed with would be cleared with the Accessibility Committee. And I don't believe currently there's a curb cut in that area or an accessible spot, so that would need to be included with the design.
Thank you.
Councillor Seven.
Thank you. I just had a question if there was any sort of. Is there, is it thought that there might be concern of pedestrians crossing the road? I've just read that maybe this might be in lieu of closing that road for events. I'm just wondering if because there's not really a pedestrian crossing there. I just wondered if that had been discussed or?
Mr. St. Louis.
Yeah, through the mirror again. So that's part of the reason why we would include this day, a small stage in the seating on the other side of the benchel. To hopefully alleviate small shows that don't need to use the benchel but could use the small stage, and that would alleviate road closures.
Okay, anything further? If not, it's been moved and seconded. Oh, Councillor Henderson.
I just wanted to say that the Accessibility Committee got a curb cut put in several years ago when we were still having the Garlic Festival and things like that, and it, but it's down on the road so that's safer for people in wheelchairs or whatever to get there, so they can cross up from the benchel across into the grass area. But we decided at the time not to do it up where the parking is because it's too much of a slope and too dangerous. This way they can come along the sidewalk and just come along and get in there.
Thank you. Anything further? If not, all those in favor? Post any? That's carried.
Item seven point two is correspondence regarding the catch-and-release justice, and there is a staff recommendation that the correspondence from Stratford Police Services regarding catch-and-release justice be received, and that direction be given on the endorsement of the resolution from the City of Sarnia.
Councillor Ingram.
Thank you. So I'll move the staff recommendation and also the endorsement from the resolution of the City of Sarnia, including all of the additional items that our Deputy Chief of Police had included in his correspondence.
Thank you. Seconded by Councillor Bunting. Discussion. Councillor Vazalakos.
I just wanted to thank the chief for contextualizing what the original request was from the City of Sarnia and appreciating also the additional comments that, you know, asked the government to look at root causes of some of these issues, and also the need for a holistic approach to addressing them that that, you know, sort of moves away from, from a punitive and criminalization approach to some of these issues, and more a mental health and social services approach. So I want to, I want to thank, thank him for that context.
Thank you. Anything further? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Post any? It's carried.
Turning to your addendum, item seven point three is a request to extend the current exemption from the Noise Control Bylaw one-one-three dash seventy-nine for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two Lights on Stratford. And there's a staff recommendation that approval be given to Lights on Stratford for an extension of the current exemption to the Noise Control Bylaw for their event held at Market Square at One Wellington Street from five P M. to ten P M. daily until Sunday, January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, from the following provisions as noted on the addendum. And that approval be given to extend the operating hours of the outdoor accessible washroom at City Hall by one hour until Sunday, January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mover is Councillor Bunting, a second is Councillor Henderson. Discussion. I just want to thank Heather Denny, our new events coordinator. She put this together with the information from Zach Gribble at Destination Stratford. And it's been a great addition, so thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Post any? That's carried.
We worship, turning back to your agenda, item eight, business for which previous notice has been given. There was none scheduled. Respect to item nine, reports to the standing committees, there are no reports from the standing committees to be received by council. Item ten is notice intent, and there was none scheduled. So moving to item eleven, which is reading of the bylaws, there is one bylaw listed for consideration, that's by law eleven point one, the confirmatory bylaw from the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two Regular Council Session, and this bylaw requires first and second reading and third and final reading.
All right, so I'll follow my sword that I missed this, the last meeting at the end. So, Councillor Ingram, since you had sent a note reminding me shortly after you get to move it, a seconder. Councillor Vazalakos. So clearing up the meeting from two weeks ago. All right, all those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Thank you. Let the record show the mayor was in error. Nobody's ever said that. Next item.
The Chair, if we could call third reading and final for the confirmatory?
Councillor Gaffney and Councillor Henderson. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Thank you.
Item twelve is the consent agenda. Are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Right. Anything on the consent agenda? Seeing none. We'll go to new business. And seeing no hands for that, we'll take a motion to adjourn to standing committees. Social Services will be first, Community Services, and then Planning and Heritage. Councillor Clifford moved and seconded by Councillor Ingram. All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried. So I'll turn it over to Councillor Henderson with Social Services.
I'd like to call the Social Services Committee to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. The Subcommittee Minutes are there for you to look at from January the eleventh. And I encourage anybody out there that missed the January eleventh Social Services Subcommittee Meeting to go to the council calendar and watch it because it's all about the homeless enumeration and what we're doing here in the city, and the Chief of Police, Quinn Malott, Ryan Erb, and all of the staff did excellent reporting, so it's very informative. Number four, delegations, there's none scheduled. Number five, report to the manager of Children's Services. The recommendation is that the report titled Information on Workforce Funding for Childcare in Early Years be received for information. Councillor Ritzma and Councillor Ingram is seconding. Any questions or comments? Did you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you through the Chair. I think the report speaks to itself. Obviously, we're keeping an eye on our current assessment of the shortage of E C Es that we are seeing, and we'll look for opportunities to increase that workforce where we can.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Just a minute, let's switch back. Um, six point one, two thousand and twenty-one homeless enumeration results that the report titled twenty-twenty-one homelessness, homeless enumeration results to receive for information. And I'll turn that over to you, Kim, or do you want Alex?
Thank you through the Chair. I have the manager of Ontario Works and Homelessness on with me to speak to both reports. Thank you.
Through the Chair, I just wanted to thank everyone for all the agencies we work with for the work they put in to complete this homelessness enumeration. We have had a quality by-name list, which is a quality list of all the individuals and families experiencing homelessness in Stratford, St. Mary's, and Perth County. Since October of two thousand and nineteen, we continue to rely on that list to inform the service delivery that we provide. This enumeration was a good opportunity for us to review that list, make sure it was as up-to-date as it possibly could be, and that the data was as accurate as it possibly could be. So that's where we sit now. The, the numbers that are included in the report would be the most recent numbers that we have available to us at this time. So I just wanted to thank all the agencies that participated in the enumeration and made it possible. And just the enumeration, if there's a lot of interesting information in there that speaks to the homelessness situation that's occurring in our area. And I would encourage, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at the full details of the results, it is, it does provide a lot of context for the situation that is occurring. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody like to move that? Councillor Bacalasis and Councillor Ingram is seconding. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none. All in favor? Thank you. Six point two. Coordinated response for those unsheltered, that report titled coordinated response for those unsheltered, they receive for information. And once again, Alex, did you have anything you want to add to this?
Through the Chair, just that it's, this is going to be an iterative process that we have in place. The response is going to be ever-changing to meet the needs of the community, the individuals that are living unsheltered. We continue to put as much attention, effort, and resource as we can to supporting these individuals, but the ultimate goal is permanent housing. We do encourage anyone who does come into contact with someone who's sleeping rough or experiencing homelessness, or they know of someone to reach out to the Social Services Office. We'll do our best to connect with those individuals and support them as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm at the Roma Conference this week, and today was about homelessness and the housing crisis in Ontario, and the stories are very similar to what we're experiencing here in Stratford. But during COVID, it's been amazing, same as in Stratford here, how many agencies have pulled together to make sure that people are able to come in from the cold and to help them. So we thank your department a lot for that. Anybody have any questions on that? I'm Councillor Clifford.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I haven't read the whole report, I apologize, but are the cases of homelessness, are they going up annually, or are they staying the same, or is it decreasing? Like what's, what's happening overall in Stratford and Perth?
Go ahead, Alex.
Through the Chair, so we have, we have seen an increase over the last year. Since the onset of the pandemic, we've seen an increase in our numbers. So our previous baseline for our by-name list was at eighty-seven individuals and families, but that would predate, that'd be about October twenty nineteen when our by-name list was implemented. Since May, we've seen a pretty stark increase as well, and that is attributed to a lot more work being done by agencies with the enumeration coming as a focus to reconnecting with individuals who have gone inactive. So we have seen an increase to homelessness in general. You'll see through the enumeration report, a large majority of those individuals are provisionally accommodated, so in transitional housing, couch surfing, staying with friends and family. But we have seen an increase to unsheltered homelessness as well. I think we had that in some earlier reports due to the pandemic, there were some hesitation from friends and family to allow individuals to stay with them. Some individuals may have burnt bridges, unfortunately, and they're not able to return to those places. So we are seeing an increase in unsheltered homelessness as well, but overall, we are seeing an increase in homelessness in general across Stratford, Perth County, and St. Mary's.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. All in favor? Carried. Any, sorry, I forgot to ask, any opposed? Oh, Councillor Gaffney, did you want to ask something? Sorry.
I'm not sure, but did somebody make a motion on that?
Oh, I thought Councillor Bacalasis and Councillor Ingram, the city clerk.
For the Chair, I had Councillor Vazalakos and Ingram, item six point one, but I do not believe you called for a mover and seconder for item six point two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Gaffney's moving it, and Councillor Ritzma's seconding it. Sorry about that. Thank you for catching that, Councillor Gaffney. All in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Thank you. Okay. So look for a mover to adjourn. Councillor Bunting and Councillor Seventy is seconding it. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? It's carried. Thank you.
Good evening. I will call the Community Services Committee meeting to order. Item two is disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none. Item three is your Subcommittee Minutes, the January thirteenth minutes for provided for your information. Item four is delegations, for which we have none scheduled. Item five, reporter or Director of Community Services, with item five point one being the Gulf Force twenty-twenty-two budget and fee schedule. We do have a staff recommend, staff recommendation that the twenty-twenty-two Municipal Gulf Course Budget and Fee Schedule be approved as presented. Moved by Councillor Gaffney. Second by Councillor Ritzma. Questions? Seeing none. I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any? And as carried. Item six is for your information of the committee, and we did have a department update and a Subcommittee Discussion from our meeting. The minutes are there for your review. And we do have item six point two, the Advisory Committee and Outside Board Minutes from the Board of Parks Management and from Communities in Bloom. And if there's no further business, I'd accept a motion to adjourn. Oops, sorry, Councillor Vazalakos, my apologies.
Sorry, I do have a question, only because I'm being asked about it by multiple people, and I really, I don't have background or an answer for them. And people have been asking for a while now. Under the Board of Park Management, under the minutes, I noticed that there's an item with respect to the tennis club, and I believe it's something to do with a winterization or a bubble for the courts and, and where that stands. And so I'm wondering, I mean, it doesn't have to, I'm wondering if the Director could give a brief overview, or whether if not tonight, maybe come back to Community Services Committee next time and give us, give us a report on what that is and where it stands.
Sure. Director, I don't want to put you on the spot, but are you going to provide an update at this time, or would you like to do it at our next council meeting?
I think it best through the Chair that I provide an update at the next Community Services Subcommittee meeting and have more information.
Thank you. Councillor Vazalakos, is that okay for you?
Yeah, that's fine. It's just, as I said, I have no context, so people are asking me questions, and I, I don't know where to point them to or anything else, and I just noticed it there. So that's fine.
Madam Clerk.
The Chair, maybe please have that in a motion.
Certainly. Councillor Vazalakos, you'll make the motion to have the Director provide comments on the or sorry, on the tennis club's updates?
Sure, yes.
Seconded by Councillor Gaffney. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Is there any further questions or comments to the Director before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Seeing none. Sorry, could I get a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councillor Clifford, seconded by Councillor Henderson. Thank you. All in favor? And that is carried.
Thank you. Councillor Beatty, I'd like to call the Planning and Heritage Committee meeting to order. Item number two, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none, delegations. Number three, none scheduled. Item number four, report of the manager of planning, four point one, planning report modifications to draft approved plan of subdivision, three-one-T, one-eight-dash-zero-zero-three, with the address of one-four-one-seven-eight Perth Line thirty-six. And I'm going to ask Mr. Bannon to make his presentation at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, plan of subdivision thirty-one-T, eighteen-zero-zero-three was granted draft approval by City Council on February tenth of two thousand and twenty. Through the, the draft approved plan, a vehicular connection was provided to the lands to the east of the subject property. The adjacent developer is now advancing their official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment applications. And through those applications and the conceptual site design that was prepared for a future plan of condominium on the adjacent lands, it was determined that the connecting street is no longer required. As a result, the developer of the subject lands is now proposing to remove the connecting street D from the plan of subdivision and convert the land to an additional residential building lot. So the requested redline changes include replacing the street D with a new single detached lot, a reduction of the lot furniture of the adjacent, adjacent lot, which is lot number sixty, from twenty meters down to fourteen point six-five meters. And the connection of street B to Perth Line thirty-six at the Easterly Loop, which provides a second access of vehicles, which is in accordance with their official plan. The removal of point-three-meter reserves for the street D and the provision of daylight triangles on both sides of the street for the connection to line thirty-six, and then the renumbering of all lots and blocks. Plan of subdivision allows for a development of a mix of residential uses that includes single-detached dwellings in a medium-density block. The proposal is considered to implement a cost-effective development pattern that includes park and open space, and it meets in the long-term needs of the residents. The modifications to the draft plan of subdivision is consistent with the provincial policy statement. The residential area policies in the official plan allow for a range of dwelling types. The plan of subdivision provides efficient growth on lands that have been designated for residential development with a mix of dwellings that are on a block, and sorry, and the medium-density residential block is located adjacent to a collector road. Modifications continue to provide for a medium-density block and lots that meet the density targets in the low and medium-density residential designations. And it is our opinion that the proposed modification conforms to the official plan and represents good planning for the subject lands. As for the zoning bylaw, the reduced furniture for lot sixty still complies with the residential first density R-one bracket five zone, and the proposed lot will meet the zoning bylaw requirements and modify, modifications meet the intent of the zoning bylaw. So there's a recommendation before you that lists several conditions that needed to be modified as a result of the renumbering. Again, the proposed modifications include replacing street D with a new single detached lot, changing the adjacent property lot furniture from twenty meters down to fourteen point six-five, and providing a connection to street B, and the rest is basically clean up for our renumbering. And I'm available to answer any questions for the Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bannon. Questions? For Mr. Bannon. Thank you. Councillor Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. I wonder if you could go back to the slide comparing the, the draft approved plan with the proposed plan, and just highlight for anybody watching from home where that additional lot is and where that street D connection would have been?
Certainly. Here we are. So the street connection that is going to be provided is where my most cursor is, which is on the eastern side of the plan of subdivision. The adjacent lands that are being developed are just to the east, and if you can see the most cursor, that is where a street D was proposed to connect to the adjacent lands. Since the other adjacent lands are going to be developed with the plan of condominium, that would just dead-end, which really is an effective use of that land, so the developer is proposing to, to create a singly detached lot in that location instead.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions from council? Councillor Gaffney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess we're okay with having another, another entry on the line thirty-six. Which I, I, I asked because it's a pretty heavily traveled road, and and I just, I just wonder about having that, all that traffic going out there, but that, thanks.
I see the mayor's hand.
I'd just like to say that line thirty-six is a city road, and anything that gets people from driving through residential streets to get them onto more a direct transport would be great. A good example would be McCarthy Road not going all the way through. If you'd like to ask the residents on Cullaton, Foreman, or how much they enjoy it, they'd tell you they'd be happy to have more going to O Lone and line thirty-six, which is Quinlan Road. So I'm happy to see that.
Thank you, Mayor Matheson. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. There is a motion with regards to the the modifications. Do I have a mover for that? Thank you, Councillor Ingram, and a seconder, Councillor Clifford. If there's no further questions or comments, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and I believe that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving to item four point two, Planning Report, Official Plan Amendment, O P A zero-one-dash-twenty-one and zoning bylaw amendment Z zero-one-dash-twenty-one for the address of four-one-one-seven Perth Line thirty-six and Miss Bridge, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Through the Chair, good evening. Give me one moment here. Confirming everyone can see that okay on their screens? Excellent. So you have before you this evening an official plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment for four-one-one-seven Perth Line thirty-six. So these are the lands directly to the east of the lands that Mr. Bannon just presented on. And so in January of two thousand and twenty-one, applications were deemed complete for an official plan amendment, a zoning bylaw amendment, and a draft plan of subdivision for the lands located at four-one-one-seven Perth Line thirty-six. So following the statutory public meeting that was held in February of last year, the applicant Northwest Stratford's Development, Inc., entered into an agreement of purchase and sale with Reed's Heritage Homes for the lands located north of the Mac Tamaridrain. Reed's Heritage Homes is now proceeding with a Reed's Heritage Homes is now proceeding with a revised official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment application for these lands. The draft plan of subdivision that had previously been applied for is being held in abeyance as it's anticipated that the development of these lands will occur through a future draft plan of condominium. It's also anticipated that the applications for the balance of the lands that are located to the south of the McNamara Drain will proceed at a later date. So the lands subject to the applications before you tonight are on blue, are in blue on the screen in front of you. They are located to the south of Perthline 36 and to the north of the McNamara Drain, and they have an approximate area of 14.78 hectares. These lands are currently vacant and used for agricultural purposes. So the purpose of the official plan amendment is to redesignate the subject lands from residential area and medium density residential to medium density residential special. And this will allow for additional residential uses on the property, including single detached, semi detached, townhouses, apartments, triplexes, stacked townhouse dwellings, and back to back townhouse units. The official plan amendment is seeking to establish a minimum density of 16 units per hectare and a maximum density of 100 units per hectare. The amendment also proposes a maximum height of six stories for apartment dwellings and four stories for all other residential uses. Lastly, the amendment also proposes to alter the regulatory flood hazard to align with the court in McNamara Drain Master Plan and the parks and open space boundary. The subject lands are zoned agriculture in the township of Perth East zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw amendment application is seeking to rezone a portion of the subject lands to a residential fourth density with site specific provisions, a portion of the subject lands as park and a portion of the subject lands as flood plain. The R4 zoning provisions have been structured in a manner that will facilitate the future development of the lands through a phased standard plan of condominium. Through this type of condominium application, blocks and lots are not created. And as a result, the zoning provisions have been structured to measure setbacks between building walls rather than lot lines. And this will ensure that appropriate development standards are implemented. The general use regulations for the R4 zoning that have been requested are structured to function as interior side yard setbacks, exterior side yard setbacks, rear yard depth, front yard depth, lot coverage and landscape open space due in the lands immediately to the south. The zoning, the residential zoning requested would permit a range of housing types that include cluster housing, single detached, semi detached, triplex, townhouse dwellings, stacked townhouse dwellings, back to back townhouse dwellings, and apartment dwellings. The subject lands have access to full municipal water and sanitary services. However, in accordance with the capacity of the Quinlan Popping Station, based on the size of the subject lands, servicing is currently available for a maximum of 392 dwelling units. So because the applicant has asked for a medium density residential special policy area designation, that would have a density of 16 to 100 units per hectare, a holding provision has been recommended on the subject lands to limit the total number of residential units to 392 until future servicing constraints have been addressed. A portion of the lands proposed for development is located within the existing flood plain. As you're aware, work is currently underway within the McNamara Drain that will result in the alteration of the flood plain and allow for the development of these lands. As a result, it's recommended that an additional holding provision be applied to the lands within the existing flood plain to prevent any buildings or structures until the works to the drain and the flood plain have been completed and accepted by the city and the Conservation Authority. The application was circulated to internal departments and agencies. The comments are outlined in detail in the staff report, but in general, there are no comments or concerns. Notice of the application was also sent to surrounding property owners in January of 2021. And as mentioned, the statutory public meeting was held in February of 2021. One public comment has been received regarding the existing trees on the subject property. And through the future site plan and draft plan of condominium applications, the applicant will be required to submit an updated vegetation management plan that outlines which trees are to remain and which trees are proposed to be removed. The requested official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment are consistent with the provincial policy statement through the promotion of efficient development patterns and through the provision of 392 residential dwelling units that contribute to a range and mix of dwelling units in the city. And the dwelling units proposed are at a density that provide for the efficient use of municipal infrastructure. The official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment will provide for the future development of the subject lands in a manner that contributes to the achievement of a broad mix of housing types, which will promote the diversity of the city's housing stock. In addition, the subject applications will provide for development that will meet the minimum and maximum density requirements of the official plan, providing for more compact development and the efficient investment and ongoing maintenance of municipal services. The subject lands are also located within the Stratford West Secondary Planning Area and the requested official plan amendment aligns with the vision for this area as set out in the secondary plan through the provision of medium and low density housing forms within the density ranges contemplated by the secondary plan. As the applications are consistent with the PPS and conform with the City of Stratford official plan and general intent of the zoning bylaw, staff are recommending approval of the official plan amendment to amend the designation on the subject lands to a medium density residential special, parks and open space, and by altering the regulatory flood limit, both on Schedule A and Schedule B. Staff are also recommending approval of the zoning bylaw amendment to change the zoning to a residential fourth zoning with a holding provision to limit the total number of dwelling units to 392 until servicing constraints are addressed. And a second holding provision to address works within the flood plain until the drain work is completed. That is all I have for you formally this evening. I'd be pleased to answer any questions the committee has at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge, for that excellent report. Questions from Council? Counselor Henderson?
I just want to be clear in my head. So starting from O'Loane coming east, this is the second subdivision or the third?
Through the Chair, this is the second subdivision. So the first one was the one that you saw previously through Mr. Bannon's presentation, and this is the second one.
Okay, and I remember I asked about sidewalks back then. And I'm just trying to remember what the answer was. Are they putting the money into a reserve right now to put the sidewalk at a later date? Or how is that working? Because I'm worried in the future, like once this development, you know, goes all the way down towards Morningside Street, then we're going to have to come back at some point and put a sidewalk in. Because, well, there's just going to be, my understanding is, a walkway or a bike path over to the south side, right, heading towards MacArthur from this, because of the drain.
Through the Chair, so that's correct, Counselor Henderson. There is plans for pathways and walkways within the drain connecting the lands to the south and the north. I don't know offhand about the sidewalk requirement. I believe the Director of Infrastructure is on the call this evening. I don't know if he has any more information on the timing of sidewalks along line 36.
So yeah, so the Chair, I don't have that information really at hand, sorry.
That's fine. I just, I'm just concerned about it, and I think we should be aware that, you know, of this and when they come for their site plan, we should be ensuring that either they do the sidewalk or they put the money in the reserve so that we can do it later.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. I have Counselor Basilakos, and I believe Counselor Seven.
I was just going to add that if we had to choose between sidewalk, but a multi use trail would work really well along line 36 because it could link up some active transportation infrastructure as well across there. So again, not knowing what the plan is for a sidewalk, but would there be the option to do similar to what was done along a loan of a multi use path?
That's a better idea, a great idea.
Thank you, Counselor Basilakos. Counselor Seven, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. So I just said a couple of things. Is there, I'm just looking at the conceptual site plan, and maybe this will be addressed a little later on. Is there a plan for dimensions apartments and stacked townhouses? Is there a plan on the actual conceptual site plan? I just, I can't, when I zoom in, it's too hard to sort of read what's going on there, but I was just wondering if there is a plan for those, that type of housing or?
Through the Chair, so the conceptual site plan that the developer submitted at this point in time does not show apartments or stacked townhouses. It shows a variety of different types of townhouses, including bungalow towns, rear garage towns, and back to back townhouses.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just wondering, at 392 units, if you don't have the number, that's okay. I'm just wondering if you have the unit of what density that would be for the site. Ms. Bridge?
You just give me one second. I will do that calculation very quickly here. Through the Chair, it comes out to a little bit more than 25 units per net hectare.
Okay, thank you for doing that. And my final, I guess, comment is, I know when we talked about the development to the west, the one we were just talking about previous item, but is there, is there no way to develop like roadways over that drain? Or is that something that would be too cost prohibitive? Or what is the, what's the case then?
Through the Chair, to Counselor Seven, could you just clarify if you're talking about like a public road access through the drain? Or if you're speaking to more pedestrian type connections?
Sure, I'm referring to public roadways. I guess I'm just asking because with the development to the west, it is okay as a smaller development. I'm just, this is seeming bigger one, and I just, you know, it just seems like we're sort of building island, you know, neighborhood communities. And I just prefer them to be connected, but I just was wondering if that was something that was, if it's just too cost prohibitive or if there's a reason for that.
Through the Chair, we could certainly get some more information on that for Counselor Seven. My understanding is that the Conservation Authority, this is part of their regulated in their floodplain area, and when it's a floodplain area, there's limitations in terms of what you can put through there in terms of public roadways and access.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Just in this comment, maybe, or a question may be directed to the Director Crinklaw. With the two subdivisions that are discussed here tonight, I'm wondering if a traffic light would be in the offings for the intersection of line 36 and Morningside Street? Just, Mr. Crinklaw, is there any discussion about that?
So the Chair is trying to rack my brain here. So line 36 in Morningside, the infrastructure is currently in place to install a light system when the warrants are there for the traffic, so. It's ready when the traffic meets the warrants.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Counselor Ingram, I see your hand.
Thank you for, Ms. Bridge, could you just clarify the number of units per phase? It's a little bit difficult to read in this plan, but I believe the most easterly portion, which is the blue, says 134 units. And then the green, which is phase two, says something, and phase three, which is the red and the most westerly, I can't read that either.
Through the Chair, I do believe that Caroline Baker is on the call today to answer questions, and she may be able to address that question more accurately, Counselor Ingram.
Okay, perfect. And then would you happen to have the distance from the most easterly edge of this development to the closest commercial plaza?
Through the Chair, I do not have that measurement at hand this evening.
Thank you.
So at this point, why don't, I would like to ask for a motion that Caroline Baker and Kevin Fergan be heard regarding the official plan amendment to OPA 01-21 and zoning bylaw amendment Zed 01-21 for the address of 4117 Perthline 36. A mover for that? Thank you, Counselor Ingram, a seconder. Thank you, Counselor Bunty. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Ms. Baker, are you available?
Through the Chair, we are just working to connect both Caroline and Kevin.
Thank you.
Good evening to the Chair. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you very much.
I apologize. I was just being switched over to a panelist, so it put me back into Zoom. I might, if it's acceptable to use Chair, first have Mr. Fergan provide some brief remarks on behalf of Reed's Heritage Homes, and then I might just circle back on some of the planning matters and questions that have been raised this evening.
Thank you very much. Kevin, the floor is yours.
Thank you and good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, very well. Thank you.
Very good. Caroline, I don't know if you have the slides queued up, because when I look at it on my screen, I don't see any of the slides. I don't know if that's the same for Council.
There they are.
Sorry, don't mean to rush you.
They're there now, okay?
Oh, good, very good. So good evening, Mr. Chair, your worship and counselors. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Kevin Fergan, and I'm Vice President of Development at Reed's Heritage Homes. Given we're a new builder and developer to Stratford, I just thought I would take a moment to briefly provide some background and an introduction to Reed's Heritage Homes. We're certainly proud of our 40 year history as a third generation builder, having built many homes and communities across Southern Ontario. In particular, we've had success developing and building in large and small communities by being engaged at a local level. We certainly take pride in the accolades our team has achieved for the quality of homes that we build. But also equally so, we've consistently been recognized as a top employer in Canada, and this is certainly a genuine testament to our people at Reed's. If you could queue the next slide. And lastly, we've wanted to be in the Stratford market for some years now. This is a wonderful community, and council staff should be proud of their civic efforts. And the reputation that Stratford expresses is a very, very desirable location to live. We finally landed on the right project, and we feel it will bring forward a needed product next to the city. And we're certainly excited about it. With that, I'll turn it back to Caroline, our planner, to just address some further planning matters in addition to the comments that Ms. Bridge bridges had, and then I have a few more comments to make after Caroline is done.
Perfect.
Go ahead, Baker.
Thank you. And if not already mentioned, I'm assisting Reed's with the applications this evening. And if you don't mind just switching to the next slide, and I'll try to go quickly because Ms. Bridge provided a very thorough and comprehensive presentation a few moments ago. As she did mention, Reed's Heritage Homes entered agreement purchase and sale with the current owner Northwest Stratford in the fall of 2021. This is just a quick graphic to show the land that has been purchased by Reed's, which is north of the drain. The drain will then be a dedicated component, and the land south of the drain will remain in ownership by Northwest Stratford. And they will carry forward with planning applications for that land. If I could get to the next slide, please? This is just an air photo of the site. For context, as mentioned, just over 14 hectares in size. Quilland to the north, the drain to the south with the pumping station. And the development you heard earlier this evening is immediately to the west, which is countryside developments. And I did just want to note here that both developers and builders that have been working together with city staff, given their proximity and shared property lines, certainly through coordination of access and servicing and lauding. Next slide, please. So just a quick comparison for information. The image on the top left is the subdivision that was seen at the public meeting in February of last year. You'll see there was a municipal road, which is Street A, three residential blocks and a park block. These blocks could have accommodated a range of uses from single detached on a condominium road up to an apartment building. And once Reed's entered into the agreement of purchase and sale, they were able to undertake detailed topographical work and engineering design. And once Reed's entered into the agreement of purchase and sale, they were able to undertake detailed topographical work and engineering design. And a result of that work and looking at the market and their intent for a build product, they moved to a more detailed concept, which you'll see on the bottom right. And I'll speak to it a little bit further. But without the need for a full municipal road, there is an ability to not require a plan of subdivision and move to a plan of condominium. If you go to the next slide, please. Ms. Bridge did mention and provide a thorough analysis and assessment of the amendment applications before you this evening, noting an official plan amendment to a medium-density residential. I would note that the official plan amendment remains unchanged from what was proposed by Northwest Stratford and heard at the public meeting last year. With respect to the zoning by law amendment, there has been some minor changes. And this is largely to address the proposal for dwelling units on private condominium roads. The proposed building setbacks, density, lot coverage, landscape open space, and off-street parking remain consistent with that those developments previously approved by council south of the drain. It's just the form in which they're written is appropriate for the form of development being a condominium to make sure as they move through site plan that those setbacks continue to be provided. Next slide. So this is a larger view of the concept plan proposed by Reed's Heritage Homes. And when they undertook the grading design and were coming up with some concerns related to the municipal road, the retaining wall, and how ultimately this development would function, and their intent to provide an integrated holistic community of residential uses with a series of park and parquettes, pedestrian sidewalks and trails. This is the concept that they are putting forward. Certainly does provide greater detail, in my opinion, to committee and council about the form and scale of development. I would note that both the original development by Northwest Stratford and that before you this evening is for a maximum of 392 dwelling units. So the number of dwelling units proposed does not change between the original concept and the one before you this evening. What you will see is a new private road access from Quinlan Road. This would be the main gateway or main entrance to the development that includes a center median that would be landscaped, connected to a series of private condominium roads, a range of dwelling units from bungalow townhouses, two-story townhouses, and back-to-back townhouses. So this does add a greater mix in the size and price range of potential dwelling units. You'll see on this concept that full sidewalks are contemplated, connected through the neighborhood, connecting not only to the trails proposed along the drain, but the new municipal park on the western edge that does abut the countryside development, as well as pedestrian connections to Quinlan Road and the development to the west. The parking is provided through a series of driveways, surface parking, and garage. And the intent here is to ensure equal distribution of surface parking and visitor parking to make the units conveniently accessible. And I will, to councillor Ingram's question regarding phasing, at this time, the intent is that the first phase will be 134 dwelling units with the main entrance and the stormwater management pond. The second phase would be approximately 150 units. And the last phase would be approximately 106. Each phase will require site plan approval as well as draft plan of condominium. And to, I believe the question from councillor Henderson, my understanding is that sidewalks are contemplated on Quinlan Road as well to further provide pedestrian connection. If I could turn to the next slide, and I might just turn it back to Mr. Fergan, who would just spend a bit of time discussing the design intent for this community. And I'm here, of course, afterwards for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Mr. Fergan?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks Caroline for providing that additional detail. Although we're not here providing a site plan application as of yet, we thought it would be helpful for councillors and the mayor to have a sense of what the built form might look like that we're presenting. It's always nice to put a picture to things. So, as was mentioned before, we are proposing a mix of townhouses that includes both large and small bungalow towns. These are represented in the bottom right-hand portion of the slide in front of you. And then along with that, we have rear garage towns, which is represented by the picture in the upper-left quadrant of the slide. And then lastly, back-to-back towns in the upper-right-hand corner of the slide. And these are represent, renderings rather, that are representing what we're currently building in elsewhere in southern Ontario. I think it was councillor Seven who inquired earlier about if we have any stacks or apartments proposed. And as Ms. Bridge had acknowledged, we do not propose any stacks or apartments on the site plan that we've shown before you. We feel this product mix targets what's known as the missing middle. That's often spoken of in land use planning and is lacking in Ontario. We feel it's a strong product choice for homebuyers. In our research, we feel this housing choice is affordable and attainable for a broad range of purchasers. Could you flip to the next slide, please? Certainly, the environment is important to all of us, and I commend the city of Stratford. They took the bold step two years ago when this council voted unanimously to declare an emergency and committed to back it up with a climate action plan aiming to reduce the city's carbon emissions to zero by 2050. We see a synergy in that step that council took in 2020 with sustainable development and building construction approaches that we take at Reed's Heritage Homes. Next slide. Reed Heritage Homes' approach on this Stratford project is to introduce a number of design features as a step towards our future-ready standards. Our intention now is to ensure that our homeowners will receive both today's and tomorrow's standards as a bridge towards the future of net-zero-ready home standards by 2035. We draw on experience that we've been, as the first builder in Canada, to have constructed the first production-built net-zero home, as well as the first single-detached home in Canada to have earned a LEED platinum rating. Furthermore, at the community level, the development plan that we've proposed at this time is striving to orient many of the roof lines of the homes east-west with southern exposure to maximize the potential for solar panel usage. It also provides flatter grades to enhance the walkability and minimize risers into the homes for accessibility. And finally, we also, as was mentioned earlier in Caroline's comments, we're introducing a public community park that will be accessible to all people and also retain some of the limited natural vegetation on the property by ensuring its maintenance and its overall keeping by having the park being city-owned and in the public realm. So as I mentioned, we're excited about the development. We're excited to come to Stratford. We feel humbled to step into your community that you represent so well. So with that, I'll thank you and open it up to questions to Caroline or myself.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Questions? I see councillor Henderson hand.
Well, that's pretty exciting because I have three things wrote down here, and you pretty well touched on all of them. So my understanding is you're going to build these homes to net zero?
Sorry, I just realized I hadn't had my video on, so I apologize. I think it's also nice to put a face to the name. So hello, everyone. I'm Kevin Fergan. To answer your question, councillor Henderson, they would be designed towards meeting the net zero requirement readiness by 2035. Having said that, with our experience of building net-zero homes, that is an option for purchasers to look at now rather than down the road.
Is there any thought of looking at geothermal and installing it when you're doing the design process? Because my understanding is it's better to put it in the main roads when you're doing a development, and then people can hook up after.
Yeah, it's, so my, so prior to joining Reed's, I spent 20-plus years as a consulting engineer. So I'll try and not sound too much like an engineer in answering this. But while the geothermal option has been embraced well in the commercial and the institutional and industrial marketplace, it does present some challenges on the residential side, particularly on low to mid-rise. Given, in the case of this development, we don't have significant open space areas where often you'd want to locate that geothermal piping. The other aspect to consider is in geothermal, and I'm certainly not an expert when I say this, but there's both horizontal and vertical. And there can be limitations geotechnically and hydrogeologically vertically. So I don't believe in giving false promises. And I would say likely for this project, geothermal is not something we'd be able to explore.
Okay, I just wanted to point out, like, we had Buchanan and Paul and Comter Energy Environment Meeting, and they explained that when you're putting in new subdivision, that's the time to put it in, because then it can be horizontal. Because later on, to put it in vertical, it's more challenging, as you said. Sometimes it's hard to get in the backyards and to dig down. So my other one is, you talk about affordability. Approximately, do you know approximately what range that means?
So we're contemplating a range right now that is, again, depending on the product, whether it's the large bungalow towns or the smaller, the back-to-backs, of around 495,000 to 695,000.
And my last one is about accessibility. I was pleased to hear you talk about that. But I noticed all the homes had steps. Do you actually build a certain percentage with, like, ramps or access that's? And do any of them have an actual, you know, the counter where you can wheel under and you're stowed and things like that? Do you build any of that type?
We don't build any of those as a standard offering, councillor. But what we do do, what we do is provide a number of those options. So for example, lift handles in the bathroom. On some plans, where possible, there's flexibility in the footprint for wider hallways. And that's discussed and arranged with individual purchasers, because one purchaser's need may be slightly different than another, and we, because this becomes somewhat specialized. But it's certainly options we provide for purchasers to consider.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Like councillor Clifford?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, you're planning like, if you're not gonna have geothermal, you're planning like, are you planning, are you planning? Keep pumps, air-to-air heat pumps, or is it going to be actual pass in subdivision?
Sorry, councillor Clifford, I'm gonna ask if you could repeat that again. I just didn't quite make it out, and I want to make sure I heard your question correctly.
Yes, on the heat pumps, you're planning, if you are planning heat pumps and that's zero, is it like an air-to-air heat pump you're planning, or will it be actual pass in the subdivision?
No, it would likely be air-to-air, and it would be electrical. Part of the rationale is when you're creating a net-zero-ready home, you're also pre-ruffing it in to allow for solar panels. And of course, you need your hardware and the guts of the home to effectively be running on electricity. And, you know, when you're considering solar panels, it's certainly more sustainable than using fossil fuels.
Any other questions? I see councillor Ingram, then councillor Henderson.
Thank you. So my questions are going to be a mix for Mr. Fergan and Ms. Baker. I'm wondering if you could speak to your desire to have an entire subdivision or condominium plan comprised of different styles of townhouses as opposed to a mix of semi-detached towns and low-rise apartments?
Sure. Caroline, do you want me to respond to that initially, or?
Through the chair, to Mr. Fergan, it's probably a bit of a planning question and a bit of a market builder question. So councillor Ingram, if that's all right, if Mr. Fergan starts?
Absolutely.
Sure. So, good question, councillor. And I would say that from our research, we think this is the right product mix for Stratford for a couple of reasons. We think there's a need, there's a lack of supply of this built form. Not to say that it doesn't exist, but we think there could be more of it. Two, we also think that from an affordability perspective, and I think we've all experienced the huge increases in housing that we've seen, we think this targets something that is affordable to more people. I won't pretend that's affordable for everyone. I think that would be a false statement, but certainly in a broad range of the demographic. And we just, we also feel that from a condominium, or from an ownership perspective, the condominium approach is also favorable to homeowners that we'd be targeting. Caroline, maybe you want to backfill with any planning-related comments?
Of course. In terms of a planning perspective, you know, certainly we love to mix of land use, mix of density, different product type for different users. And I do believe certain times as planners, we tend to lean that an apartment building or a condominium building inherently means something more affordable or a different product, when in fact, this isn't always the case. Apartment buildings can actually be much more expensive on a per-square-footage basis to build than, let's say, a back-to-back. And the back-to-back units, if you've had an opportunity to enter into one, they're not necessarily a full-size townhouse. They can offer a square footage that could be similar to an apartment. They can be two bedrooms. But they do give homeowners the feeling of a bit more independence. They have their own entrance typically at grade. So it gives them a similar unit typically at a slightly better per-square-foot cost. And so we do achieve, as a planner looking for mix in housing type and affordability, we do achieve those components in a slightly different format than we may on first blush think of. And that would just be my perspective from a planning perspective, but certainly councillor Ingram happy to elaborate further.
Hello, councillor Ingram?
Thank you. They both answered my question quite well. If I don't, if it's okay with the chair, I'd like to move on to my next question, which is, let's talk parking. So generally, in townhouse developments, parking is approximately 1 to 1.1 space per unit. I noticed that there's a lot of on-street spaces, which I presume are a mix of residential spaces and visitor spaces. Can you give me maybe a little bit of a breakdown as to how many visitor spaces there might be in the plan and how many are residential?
Of course, through the chair to councillor Ingram, the proposed concept planned before you this evening provides 1.5 off-street parking spaces per unit, which is the requirement in the existing zoning by law. As you likely know, the new zoning by law that is imminently coming before council is proposing 1.25 for certain uses, 1.5 for other uses. So this proposed concept stays, I guess, with slightly higher end of the range in terms of parking. I certainly allow Mr. Fergan to speak a little bit further if they have any experience with the condo. But typically, we see 0.25 is assigned to visitor as a minimum. And those visitor parking spaces would be identified as part of the common element in the condominium to ensure that they are protected for visitors and not sold to unit owners. And the reason for probably what seems like a greater number of surface parking is the back-to-backs don't have the same driveway garage where you can accommodate parking.
Councillor Ingram, if I may, through the chair, I don't have really anything additional to add to Caroline's comments on parking. But I did want to just briefly highlight, if it would help, to give a sense of the size of the units. So the small bungalow units are about 1,040 square feet. The larger bungalow units are about 1,215 square feet. The back-to-back towns provide for 1,400 square feet. And lastly, the rear garage-type units provide for 1,600 square feet. So not only is it a broad range of the missing middle in terms of selection The missing middle in terms of selection of towns, but it's also a nice range in terms of available square footages.
Anything further councillor Ingram?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for those answers. And I just want to verify that the back-to-back towns are the only ones that will not have garage space. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then the driveways associated with the garages, will they be of a length that will fit a full-size vehicle? Not just that, you know, a smaller compact car, but a full-size vehicle?
Well, I have to admit, I drive a pickup truck. I haven't bought my hybrid yet. And it needs to be able to fit a pickup truck, so the driveway lengths would likely be in the order of six meters or twenty feet.
Perfect, thank you. And then my last question is related to the size of the road width. So it's not a full municipal road. There will be no, obviously, on-street parking outside of the spaces provided. What is the width of the road provided?
I can certainly, through the chair to councillor Ingram, on the concept plan, the actual paved width of the traveled portion is seven meters. Which does have to mirror a public road, so it does have to have the same traveled portion. And then there's an additional one point eight meters for sidewalk and obviously sufficient room to accommodate servicing as necessary.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you councillor Ingram. Councillor Henderson?
I forgot to ask you, in the garages, will there be charging stations put in?
We do have an option to rough in for them and to ensure that the adequate amperage is provided for. But that is, the actual charging station is an option. Admittedly, my understanding in terms of the charging stations is somewhat limited, but as I understand it, it can vary from vehicle to vehicle. So we don't want to get too prescribed in terms of offering a very specific charge or to our purchases, but certainly the roughens will be provided as well as. Adequate amperage.
Councillor Seven?
Thank you. I did want to, I guess, build on one of councillor Ingram's questions and then. You don't need to repeat what you've sort of covered, but I'm just wondering, when it comes to the density in the three hundred and ninety-two units, is there. Is there a reason or some? I just wanted to sort of, I guess, your rationale or reasoning as why you didn't. You're not planning on pushing kind of a higher density on that. Site plan.
Certainly, I can take that to start and then with Mr. Fergan's background in engineering, I'm sure he'll do a better job. But certainly, the cap is very intentional. So as part of the pumping station that was put in a year or two ago. There was density restrictions across the entire planned area for that pumping station that I believe twenty-five units per hectare. Being the magic number and city engineering essentially has allotted or given twenty-five units per hectare for all land. Within that catchment area, so that is a cap directly related to the pumping station. And so it is a magic number at three ninety-two. But certainly, should there ever be rationalizations in the, you know, the sewage pumping station for any of the development. The official plan and zoning for all the lands in this area to the south and to the west does have a higher density permission.
If I could add, just councillor Seven to Caroline's comments. Part of the rationale for a phased approach is it's going to take a few years to build and develop the subdivision. The marketplace is changing very rapidly, as I'm sure you all have seen. And so by phasing it, it provides us an opportunity to react to some degree to the marketplace and pivot. We would embrace looking at some additional density, but as Caroline pointed out, we are fixed. Based on the rated capacity of the sewage pumping station. We have suggested to staff that as we would initiate the project. At our expense, we would do some monitoring, some flow monitoring to actually see if the actual flows being generated by the development. Are reflective of what was anticipated. And perhaps if the actual flows are moderate to significantly less than was anticipated. Perhaps there's some additional capacity in the pumping station that available that we might explore. But really, that's just at a discussion stage right now.
Follow-up councillor Seven and then councillor Clifford?
Thank you. Thank you for that. I'm also wondering as a follow-up if, you know, in the staff report, they mentioned that if there were upgrades to the. The required pumping and things like that, that the density could increase. Is that something that has been looked at as far as. Would it be too cost prohibitive or is that something that was looked into to increase the density? For this development by yourselves or?
Yeah, that may be a question that staff need to respond to. As Caroline said, we're fixed in terms of the allocation. That has been allotted, as I understand it, evenly to all the contributing drainage areas to the pumping station. So we're fixed based on that capacity of the station councillor Seven, but perhaps staff can offer some more commentary.
I'm not sure if Director Crinklaw is available to address that.
The chair, councillor Seven, can you expand upon your question again so I can answer it?
Thank you. So I'm just wondering if. Is it very cost prohibitive to upgrade the pumping station or the infrastructure to have a higher density on this particular site?
Thank you, and to the chair. It's a bit more involved than simply upgrading the pump station capacity. It's the whole downstream system that actually has to be reviewed first. And it's something that we're considering for the sanitary master plan in the near future. But it's basically starting from the water pollution control plant and working its way back up through. Multiple subdivisions and neighborhoods before getting to the Quinlan Public Station itself, so. There is some analysis that needs to be done first before we can have that determination.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin and Caroline.
Thank you, Director Crinklaw. Councillor Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was gonna ask, it's in the Festival Hydro. I'm sorry, it's in the Hydro One. Would you be applying to Festival Hydro? Like for, I'm glad, make sure they use Christian in that subdivision?
Right councillor, I'm gonna have to ask you to repeat that again. I'm just not quite making it up.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, are you gonna be applying to Festival Hydro for electricity in that subdivision? I believe it's in Hydro, it's in Hydro One right now.
Oh, yes, we will be.
And I saw Mayor Matheson's hand.
Well, the standard practice of Festival Hydros for any annexed lands that have development on it is to apply to the Ontario Energy Board, who has the. Final approval of allowing Festival Hydro to service the area. It is supported when the developers such as Reed Heritage Homes or Stratford Northwest assign the same letter. But there is a process outside of just the developer and Festival Hydro having that approved. But as a board member, I do know that is the current policy is to apply for all annexed lands to be serviced by them.
Thank you councillor, Mayor Matheson. Any other questions for our presenters? Council? Seeing none, thank you both of you for answering your questions so very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you kindly for the time.
Turning back to the agenda, our next item, there is a staff recommendation with regards to the official plan designation. Move for councillor Ingram. Thank you and a second for that. Councillor Beatty, thank you. Further discussion or concerns? Councillor Seven, I see your hand.
Thank you, and I just wanted to ask sort of a follow-up based on the question. So I don't know if it's to Ms. Bridge or to Mr. Crinklaw. It would be better suited, but I'm just referring back to the bylaw amendment and the holding provision. At the maximum dwelling units until additional serving is provided. I'm just wondering if that is. Is there an intention of this on the city to provide additional serving, just servicing at this point, or is that just put in there? Just sort of in case additional servicing is provided sometime.
Ms. Bridge?
Through the chair to councillor Seven. So the holding provision's been put in place because the density that's been requested through the official plan amendment in the zoning. Would exceed that property's allocation through the Quinlan Pumping Station. So the holding provision is there to cap the total number of units in line with that allocation. If in the future, there are upgrades to the sanitary system that would allow greater density on those properties. They would just have to go through a process to lift that holding provision as opposed to going through a full rezoning process.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to comment that. Yeah, it's a tough situation. I think we're kind of stuck on this particular site, but ideally. I would prefer higher density. But yeah, it seems like we're kind of stuck on this one, but I just wanted to comment that I would prefer higher density where possible in the newer developments. On the outside there, so thank you.
Thank you councillor Seven. Anything further? The motion has been moved in second. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And item number five, motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Clifford, second by councillor Seven. Thank you, all in favor. And that's unanimous. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Councillor Recovina will turn it over to the clerk. Through your worship, item fifteen point one is declarations of beginner interest. Are there any declarations made at standing committee to be restated at the Recovina portion? Seeing none? Item fifteen point two is reading of the bylaws and there's one bylaw listed for consideration. That's bylaw eleven point two, the confirmatory bylaw. This bylaw requires first and second reading and then third and final reading.
Moving first and second reading councillor Ritzma and councillor Bunting. All those in favor? Opposed any? Moving third and final reading of tonight's confirmatory bylaw, councillor Henderson and councillor Ingram, all those in favor? That carries. And to adjourn this evening's proceeding is a motion by councillor Vazalacos and councillor Beatty. All those in favor? Opposed if any? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.